Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting for March 7th. We're going to have a proclamation and a salutation, and then we'll get into a report from the OPO and the OPOC. So before that, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart. We'll come back to him. I see him signing on there. Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton, we didn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to say I'm here, but I want to say hello to my friend Lad. Good to see your face, Lad.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zappone.
Here.
And back to Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, so our first proclamation is going to be Red Cross Month, and Councilmember Bingle is going to read that proclamation. And he is joined, I believe, by Ryan Rodden. I might get that name incorrect, but Councilmember Cathcart, take it away. Excuse me, Councilmember Bingle, take it away.
Thank you. All righty. Whereas incongruence with the tradition of recognizing and celebrating these services provided to the people of the United States of America by the American Red Cross, which was instituted by President Franklin D. Roosevelt in 1943 and continued by our nation's leaders today. And whereas throughout its 160-year history, the American Red Cross serving the greater inland northwest has supported the needs of the citizens of this community by providing critical aid to victims of disasters from home fires to windstorms, teaching tens of thousands the skills that save lives, providing international connection services, and supporting service members, military families, and veterans through outreach and engagement activities. And whereas the American Red Cross, through its dedicated work of volunteers, donors, and partners, will continue to respond to the challenges at home and abroad with compassion and generosity, ensuring that help and hope is available to all who turn to the Red Cross during their time of need. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month in Spokane and encourage citizens to recognize the distinctive value of this great organization in our community and celebrate the extraordinary and legitimate partnership we share.
All right, thank you. I don't see Ryan on the video screen, but he might be on the phone. We've got a couple of people on the phone. Ryan, if you're there on the phone, hit star three. All right. Oh, welcome to City Council, Ryan, if you'd like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you so much for recognizing Red Cross Month. I'm Ryan Rodden, the Executive Director of our Greater Inland Northwest Chapter. And just like you were calling out the great work of our local team. There's collecting blood, teaching the community key safety courses, working with active-duty military and veterans. I just couldn't be more proud of our local team and really appreciate you taking a moment to recognize our great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. People are clapping for your group and all that you do. We really appreciate it. Next, we have a salutation from Councilmember Zappone.
Saluting the public service of Donovan Smith. Whereas Donovan Smith, a 19-year-old resident Spokane, has been making soap since 2020 for those in our community who are in need, donating hundreds of soaps to Project Beauty Share, Jewels Helping Hands, and Our Place Community Outreach. And whereas Donovan learned how to grow fruit hydroponically, growing lettuce in his living room, as well as strawberries, melons, green beans, cucumbers, potatoes, and more, donating them to organizations such as Our Place Community Outreach, Jewels Helping Hands, and Mass Spokane. And whereas Donovan Smith was named Young Philanthropist of the Year for 2020 by the Spokane United Way and Emerging Leader Society, while also being recognized for his visionary work by publications, including People Magazine and The Washington Post, as well as receiving awards from former President Barack Obama, then Governor of New Mexico, the Mayor of Albuquerque, Disney, and McDonald's. And whereas Donovan also holds an annual gift card giving campaign that gives Target and Walmart gift cards to people experiencing homelessness, in addition to donating hygiene products, socks, and gloves to organizations helping the homeless. Now, therefore, Ryan Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute Donovan Smith for his service for the City of Spokane. A very impressive man, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Donovan. And I think Donovan might be on the phone as well. If you are Donovan, hit star three. All right, not seeing anything. All right, anyway, thank you again, Donovan, and thank you, Councilmembers Zappone and Stratton, for recognizing Donovan and bringing him to my attention. I really appreciate it. All right, so we have two administrative reports. They're both related. And first, we're going to hear from our Spokane Police Ombuds person, from the Office of Police Ombudsmen, Bart Logue. Welcome back to City Council.
Thank you, Council, Council President. Thank you, council members. I am trying to figure out how to pull this thing up. Luby May did it for me. We're a great team.
We can see it.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to peer before you tonight to brief our 2021 Annual Report, which is a requirement placed upon us by SMC 04.32. So I appreciate it. Significantly, last year, we saw the passage of the latest police contract, which finally allowed us the ability to write closing reports. My brief tonight will provide complaint data, highlight a few cases from our closing reports, and then to close, I'll cover some themes we are leaving 2021 with. Of note, this brief will not cover every chart or report that is covered in the annual report because it's extensive. For the City Council, you should have received an email today from us, which had a compilation of all of our closing reports we've written to date this year, as well as an electronic version of our annual report. The hard copies are being printed as we speak and will be delivered to your offices shortly. And they will also be made available on our website for any member of the public that wants to see it or drop by our office in City Hall, and we will happily provide that to you. So in 2021, go ahead, next slide, Luby May. In 2021, we were contacted by community members 1,452 times. Throughout these contacts, we conducted 73 interviews with community members, which led to six commendations for police officers, 35 OPO-generated complaints, and 64 referrals. We participated in 88 internal affairs interviews and certified 80 cases that were sent to us for review. We returned nine cases for further investigation. However, as the year went on, we realized that because our time in the last contract had been extended to 10 days for review, we had time to bring up issues and have IA correct them while we maintained the case in our box, which reduced the review time for both parties, actually. And it's a much simpler process. So if it's a significant item, we'll return it now. But if it's something that can be fixed with a slight change or one interview or something like that, we will just maintain that in our box up until that 10-day period. So I want to spend just a moment on this next slide because there are two significant takeaways that I want to point out. The first is the downward trend of complaints that began in 2019 and has continued thus far into 2022. If you consider the spike of complaints that occurred following the death of George Floyd, as well as the uptick in "I police" or "defund the police" or whatever the police nationally, the downward trend is significant. So you would think if there was all this strife in the community, we would see an upward tick. That hasn't been what's occurred here in Spokane, at least for the last two years. So I want to point that out, and I think credit is due in that regard. The other point that I want to point out is that internal complaints submitted last year were much higher than the previous two years. When a department takes the opportunity to see things wrong within itself and take action on it in an investigative and a transparent manner, that should also help lead to increased community trust. So we see both these things happening here. The most common complaint made from the public were demeanor, with 41 allegations, and inadequate response with 43. This has been consistent every single year since my arrival in 2016. Similarly, District 2, which includes the downtown area, generated the most complaints from the public, which has also been the same since I arrived. In addition to complaints, we also received 64 referrals, which are things that don't rise to the level of a complaint or we are contacted by a community member regarding something outside of the Spokane Police Department. So through your comparison of complaint outcomes, of the complaints the OPO submitted, 73% of them received an initial review or a preliminary investigation. The remaining 27% have not yet been completed. Most of these cases were suspended due to them being minor allegations that can be sent to an officer supervisor for informal follow-up. This is in line with Chief Mydl's stated goal of increasing mentorship opportunities for supervisors. In some cases that were classified as an inquiry or close, we continued to observe IA's practice of sending those cases to a supervisor for further training or mentoring. The thought process was that while the issue complained upon was not a policy violation, it might have been able to be done better. So this goes beyond what is expected in those circumstances, at least by the policy, and we consider this to be a best practice. So while community-generated cases did not receive a chain-of-command review, most were sent to supervisors for informal follow-up. Despite the pandemic, we also conducted two in-person mediations on community complaints. 52% of those received, or I'm sorry, 52% of internal complaints received a chain-of-command review, with approximately 37% resulting in sustained findings. This trend in internal complaints has also remained consistent and is in line with what is seen in other cities. So the discipline chart, we only put this in because it's required by the SMC, but this illustrates the results of all the complaints filed, and it represents both community complaints and internal complaints. So only 3% of the allegations sent to the chain-of-command for review or for a finding received no discipline. And that occurs when an allegation is not sustained. Several cases had yet to be determined prior to publishing this report. But interestingly enough, the most common discipline issued last year was actually suspension, which is not what we would have expected to see. But if we combine that with sending the cases to supervisors for informal follow-up, it makes sense because some of those lower-level cases might have received the documents of counseling, et cetera. So for OPO recommendations, last year, we made 17 recommendations to the police department through nine closing reports. Some of the topical areas where we made recommendations were duty to intervene, IA policies and procedures, use of force and de-escalation, monitoring subjects when they complain that they can't breathe, and trauma-informed interviewing training. The remaining topics are listed on the slide in the full recommendations, as well as the responses from Chief Mydl are included in the annual report. I will give a brief overview of three of the closing reports shortly. Of the 17 OPO recommendations submitted, the chief has already implemented 10 of those recommendations, with five more that are in progress or were partially implemented. The chief did not implement two recommendations. Additionally, please note that in the annual report, the chief provided us updates to the OPO recommendations from 2020, which were listed as in progress. These responses are also included in the annual report. So during 2020 and 2021, the OPO made 40 recommendations to the police department. In total, only four of those recommendations were not implemented. When compared to other oversight agencies, 90% is remarkably high, and it shows that SPD is willing to consider outside input and make some adjustments. So the first case that I will highlight is a use-of-force case, F20-045. And this was a case that involved three TASER applications by an officer in order to handcuff a reported disorderly subject. This incident took place rapidly, and it occurred near a train track overpass downtown. During the review, the SPD chain-of-command identified tactical issues. One member said little de-escalation occurred. Officers opted not to use the available cover and quickly closed distance. One member of the chain asked the use-of-force review board to review the approach tactics used by the officers to identify any safety or de-escalation lessons. While members of the review board admitted it was not our best day, they said the department had learned from it and identified follow-up training on overall tactics and defensive tactics. So we utilized the chain-of-command and review board comments to recommend that SPD require the use-of-force review board to formalize its tactical analysis of events which lead up to a use-of-force. And it's a previous recommendation which we made in C19040's closing report last year that had not yet been implemented. We also recommended that the use-of-force review board respond formally to any requests made to conduct a review in order to memorialize the analysis that the board conducted and closed the loop. Currently, the use-of-force review board only creates minutes, and information is passed informally through discussions. The chief did implement this recommendation. In F20033, this was a case where officers responded to a juvenile in a mental health crisis who was holding their family at knife point. A TASER was utilized as the juvenile would not follow command to drop the knife. After the incident occurred, the family's attorney filed a complaint with the OPO. SPD ended up suspending the investigation of this case after City Legal reviewed it because the attorney might file a lawsuit. In fact, during the initial interviews, the lawyer was specifically asked multiple times their intent to file a complaint, or I'm sorry, to file a lawsuit instead of focusing on the complaint. The problem with this approach is that SPD policy only permits a case to be suspended relating to ongoing litigation when there is a lawsuit that has already been filed against the city, a lawsuit or a civil case, or a criminal case, I'm sorry. In our recommendation, we stated that the potential for litigation alone does not meet the standard for suspending a case. The lawsuit either has been filed or it hasn't. Every complaint filed by anyone might pose the potential for a future lawsuit, if you think about it. So the OPO recommended that SPD maintain and not expand its current policy of administratively suspending complaints in which a lawsuit or claim for damages has been filed. We firmly believe that IA investigators should fully investigate complaints it receives independent of potential lawsuits or future claims for damages. It's a fine line because we don't actually want to conduct all the work for an attorney that has already filed a complaint, but it expanded in this case. So the chief determined that SPD will not implement this recommendation as he received this advice from City Legal. So as of now, complaints from attorneys will be considered on a case-by-case basis by SPD. The chief is willing, however, to update that inside of his policy manual. So the final case I'll summarize is A20-038, which involved an officer who was assigned to take home city vehicle. And he got into a collision. The problem was he had unauthorized persons in his city vehicle, and the officer was off duty. The collision occurred while road conditions were snowy and icy, and an oncoming vehicle lost control and slid into the officer. The damage to the vehicle was estimated at approximately $29,000, and the vehicle was removed from service. SPD did open internal complaints on some of those allegations. But the department determined that the accident was non-preventable because the other vehicle slid into the city vehicle, and the sheriff's office had determined the other vehicle's driver to be at fault. The problem we saw in this was the non-preventable determination because the city vehicle should not have been at the location because the officer was not supposed to report for work for five hours. So thankfully, there were not significant injuries, but we remain concerned about where liability might fall should an officer in the future misuse a city vehicle and also be found at fault for an accident. Because of this, we recommended that SPD include as part of its evaluation of collisions the totality of the circumstances to include tactical considerations, which included the officer's actions leading up to the collision, which is how we do things in use-of-force cases. In the end, the chief determined that SPD will not implement this recommendation. However, he did agree to our recommendation that SPD work with risk management to evaluate liability in collisions and ensure that it is clearly spelled out in policy. He will also update the policy and require officers with take-home vehicles to acknowledge it annually. So finally, the principles of effective oversight are really our themes. And some of this is future-leaning, but I wanted to use an example this year to go into this as we move forward into the next bargaining cycle with the Police Guild. First principle is independence, which means an absence of real or perceived influence. To maintain legitimacy, an oversight agency must be able to demonstrate its independence from law enforcement, especially in the face of high-profile issues. As an example, Chief Mydl asked the OPO to perform an independent review of the May 31 protest in Spokane, which occurred in the aftermath of the death of George Floyd. The Police Guild filed a grievance against this review, citing that it was akin to an independent investigation, which is authorized in the city charter but not in the collective bargaining agreement. Fast-forward several city administrators, and the issue still languished until the chief asked me in an email to begin the review. However, in the email, he stated I would not have access to body-worn cameras nor to officers. The chief also asked the OPO to provide our opinions in the report. Complicating that, though, is the prohibition in the collective bargaining agreement against the OPO providing an opinion on any matter under the threat of the Police Guild fast-tracking the matter to arbitration. So adequate jurisdiction and authority comes into play in this same review. The police department still imposes restrictions on what can and cannot be looked at, as well as who can and cannot be talked to. For our review, again, we had restrictions against viewing body-worn camera videos, as well as talking to officers. The SMC 04.32 states that I cannot require officers to come and talk to me. Any officer that wants to talk to me has to be voluntary. However, the requesting email restricted me from even that. Until there is adequate jurisdiction and authority to conduct reviews, investigations, et cetera, our office will always struggle with legitimacy in this review area. I would ask you to consider if I have the authority to conduct the mandates placed on our office by the city charter during our upcoming Police Guild negotiations and contract finalization. So as for adequate funding and operational resources, we are so appreciative of the many things that have occurred throughout 2021. The OPO was honored to receive a proclamation from the City Council for ombudstaid. We also want to acknowledge the mayor's administration and City Council, who have allocated funding and operational resources to the OPO. It is a significant demonstration of support for our office. As examples, during 2021, the position of deputy police ombudsman was fully established. The police ombudsman position was reclassified, and the training budget for both the OPO and the OPOC was reestablished to pre-pandemic levels. Since my arrival in 2016, the administration and City Council have continued to fund OPO initiatives, one of which is the Police Force Analysis System or our Use-of-Force dashboards. The OPO implemented the dashboard system several years ahead of a statewide initiative taking place right now to create a use-of-force database in Washington. The Washington State Attorney General's Office Special Advisory Group invited us to provide testimony regarding our dashboards as they consider how best to implement this database. And then further, about two weeks ago, I was requested by the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs to present at their upcoming conference in Spokane in May on how we use data in oversight. So finally, I just want to talk a tiny bit about public reporting. The good news is that reports are now authorized. But I would ask you to look at the restrictions placed upon the content in each and every one of them. And you can find that list on page four in our annual report. During a recent meeting with the chief and the assistant chief, it was mentioned that they did not mean to restrict the opinions of the OPO because there are certainly times when those opinions would provide analysis from a different viewpoint that might be helpful. However, when we write reports, we have to carefully navigate the restrictions to ensure that our opinion is not present at all. So if you read those reports, you'll find that we use comments from the police department in order to arrive at our recommendations. Beyond that, the collective bargaining agreement created additional layers in the review process of closing reports that infringe on our independence. So prior to publishing a closing report, we are required to send the reports to the Police Guild for review. During the process of each review, the OPO met with members of the Police Guild's leadership to discuss their feedback on the report. So it is pertinent to note right now that at no time during these reviews did the Police Guild attempt to remove, adjust, diminish, or tamper with any of our content. However, because of the restrictions placed on this report, we also wanted to send our report to the city attorney's office for a compliance review prior to sending it to the Police Guild. So Tim Zamblin, our assigned city attorney, has since reviewed the content of each report as to form prior to sending it on. We also provide it to the police chief, the assistant police chief, as well as the OPOC for their review prior to publishing. So it's imperative that the content of the reports be vastly improved to allow us to express our opinion in upcoming negotiations. To maintain legitimacy, we must be able to demonstrate our independence from law enforcement. The checks and balances in the review process greatly infringes upon our independence, and it eliminates some of the and it eliminates some of the transparency to the public on matters of public concern upon which our office was established. I have a lot more to say in our annual report. I look forward to talking to any of you that might have questions right now or in the future, once you have time to digest it. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Bert. Question, Councilmember Cathcart. Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of questions and a comment. But just to start, I just wanted to say, I think one thing that was pointed out here, and I've probably mentioned this before, that folks should take note of is just the high percentage of complaints that were dismissed for a number of reasons, but they were dismissed. And I just want to point out that I think that that's one of the most valuable parts of having in office of the ombudsman is the ability for our officers to kind of, you know, prove that maybe some false assertions or incorrect assertions are not actually the case, and I think it puts the community at ease. And if we didn't have, you know, an ombudsman able to do the investigation and do the work, it could result in the public just not ever being quite sure of what the truth was. And so I just think that this is a really helpful thing, actually, for our officers, for the community, for the city. It's a really positive thing. Of course, 67% of our community voted for an independent ombudsman in 2013. So I guess my question is just a follow-up. One is, how can the police chief or SPD restrict access to body-worn camera footage, specifically citing the May 30th events? You know, I had submitted a public records request myself for all of that footage, and I know that was dismissed early on, but my expectation had been that it would eventually get released, and we have still yet to see really much of any of that. And so I'd just be curious to see, you know, why is it that you're restricted from what I would assume is very much a public record for accessing the body-worn footage?
Thank you for your question, sir. And unfortunately, I can't give you a straight answer, but the reason we don't do it is because they specifically wrote in an email that we not do it. And the problem is, in the collective bargaining agreement, there is an ability for the Police Guild to fast-track anything that they believe is our office acting outside of our authority to expedite an arbitration, in which a bench decision will be made on whether or not I'm acting within my authority or not. I'm not willing to take that chance. When there's something on record saying I can't do it, the Guild, or I'm sorry, the policy manual says that body-worn camera video will only be reviewed under certain circumstances. I have reviewed a lot of it previously due to the complaints that were sent through our office, but because of this extra kind of extra ask, there was a grievance filed. I don't believe I have the authority to do that on my own. I think I would go down in flames in an arbitration hearing if I looked at it inappropriate.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much for responding to that.
Councilmember Cathcart, could you clarify? So you made a public records request, and it was denied?
I don't know what the term was, but yeah, I had submitted, right after the events, I had submitted a request for the footage, and I'll have to circle back with Shay and ask her what the language was in the response, but it was something to the effect of that they were working on a larger public release and that they wouldn't be fulfilling that particular request.
Okay. Well, just to note, that brings up our ordinance that you and I are working on so that it's there, but I see City Attorney's Office has invited us to another meeting on that, so I'm sorry to hear about, and I hope we get that remedied. Thanks.
Yeah, that is interesting. My legislative aide is kind of famous for public records requests, and she has over 100 gigs of that event, and so it is curious as to why she's able to get so much and others weren't.
Other questions for Mr. Logue? All right. Well, we'll go to the commission in just a moment, but I said Commissioner Logue, but really, Ombudsman Logue. I just wanted to thank you and Louvi May and your entire staff for all their work, and I really appreciate how you've highlighted the issues that we need to address in the upcoming contract, and we will look at that closely and be in discussion with you. You've made great progress, and I think you've developed, despite some obstacles, some good relations with both the department leadership and the Police Guild, so commendations for that because you're in a tricky situation. But thanks for focusing us on what still needs to be done. We'll keep at it. And with that, I will invite Lad Smith to give us some perspective from the commission. Good to see you again, Lad.
Okay. Good to see you as well, and I'm glad to be here this evening. Thank you, City Council President Beggs and City Council members. Thank you, Karen, for that special welcome I received earlier. As Chair of the Office of Police Ombudsman in 2021, it is my privilege to briefly share with you the OPOC 2021 Annual Report. I am pleased that the OPOC functioned as a full commission in 2021. The OPOC is currently comprised of the following commissioners: Luke Jasmine, who happens to be our chair for this year; Jenny Rose, who served as vice chair last year and is again this year; Lily Navarrete is a fairly recent commissioner; and Dr. James Wilburn; and then, of course, myself. Commissioner Rose and I are currently the longest-serving commissioners. Both of us started in 2015. Slide 2. A couple of highlights for 2021. The OPOC approved 17 OPO recommendations stemming from nine closing reports. A big thank you to City Council for restoring the OPO/OPOC training budget to pre-pandemic levels. It is imperative that commissioners have an opportunity to attend the annual National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, which I'll refer to as NACOL. These trainings are especially valuable to new commissioners, so we're really grateful for that renewal of funding. As mentioned earlier, in 2019, an initiative to create a deputy police ombudsman position was successfully established. It took considerable time to adjust compensation for this position change, but that was finally resolved through HR last summer. When it comes to community engagement, the pandemic certainly made this a bit of a challenge. However, unity in the community was a success. Other outreach events included SPD's "Space in Blue," and NACOL held virtual and in-person conferences. Okay, OPO recommendations. Evaluating and approving the OPO recommendations that are included in OPO closing reports is essential. The OPOC approved all 17 recommendations in 2021. A couple of examples of recommendations include duty to intervene, IA policies and procedures, de-escalation, and use of force. Evaluation of the Office of the Police Ombudsman. OPOC is duty-bound to evaluate the effectiveness of the OPO. Despite pandemic challenges, the work of the OPO is robust and comprehensive. The OPOC is especially pleased with Mr. Logue and the staff, their involvement with NACOL work groups, also U.S. Commission on Civil Rights on Excessive Use of Force panelists, Mr. Logue also use-of-force discussion with the Attorney General's Office, and appointment to the Criminal Justice Training Commission. So I think there's a lot of networking, there's an outreach happening, and that only makes the OPO a stronger office here in Spokane. Challenges. Please take note of these challenges. I think they bear repeating, because Mr. Logue just discussed some of these issues, but again, it bears repeating. There is a disconnect between city charter and the Police Guild contract. One must ask, do we truly have independent police oversight that Spokane citizens overwhelmingly approved of in 2013? I believe we do not. The restrictions foisted upon the OPO by the Police Guild in the last bargain clearly gives the Police Guild the upper hand when it comes to diminishing effective police oversight. How is it that the OPO is hamstrung by the city and Police Guild? Examples include OPO closing reports are limited in breadth and scope. Another challenge that became insurmountable was the inability to have a proper OPO review of SPD's handling of the May 31st, 2020 protest and rioting events here in Spokane. With many other cities across the country able to review police handling of protests, SPD and the city will only allow a limited review of police documentation. However, the CBA prohibits the OPO from providing their opinion on the matter. Yet another final example, any closing report from an IA investigation shall clearly state the information expressed within the report is the perspective of the OPO and that the OPO does not speak for the city on the matter and that the report is not official determination of what occurred. Actually, I do have one more example. An OPO report cannot comment on discipline of an officer or officers. This includes the inability on writing in a report whether the OPO or the OPOC agrees with or differs from the chief's findings, whether the officer acted properly, whether the officer's actions were acceptable, or whether the officer's actions were in compliance with training or policy. Additionally, no report will criticize an officer or witness or include a statement on the OPO or OPOC's opinion on the veracity or credibility of an officer or witness. In conclusion, please consider, why is the OPO not at the table during contract negotiations? On a lighter note, looking forward, as we hopefully begin to work in person again, the OPO space should align with the rest of the first-floor space. Also, in a redesign, safety of OPO staff is a must. OPO space is now a problem when it comes to privacy and confidentiality, is at risk due to a flimsy series of partitions. Not all sensitive topics can be discussed only in a windowless conference room, so we really do hope that something can be remedied in this situation. Thank you for your time this evening, and subject to any questions you may have for the OPOC, I welcome those.
Any questions from council? Chair Lad? All right. Again, thanks, Lad. I remember when you joined the OPOC.
I do. You were very helpful. Thank you.
And great work. Thanks to your commission. You have an all-star commission, I can tell, and I'm looking forward to it. And again, we've come so far as an OPO. There's more to do, and I appreciate the vigorous advocacy for really getting true independence, and we'll keep working on it.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Okay, take care.
See you. All right. We'll move to boards and commissions.
Reappointment of Linda McDermott to serve a four-year term on the Salary Review Commission from March 7, 2022 to December 31, 2025, and reappointment of Casey Lanahan Bowie IV to serve a five-year term on the Library Board from April 1, 2022 to March 31, 2027.
All those in favor of confirming these appointments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right. These two people are confirmed. Thank you for your service, and if you're interested in serving on a city board or commission, you can go to the city's website and just query boards and commissions. There's a page that has all of the boards and commissions, including what they do, any vacancies, and what the terms are for the current people. You can submit an application to the mayor's office. The mayor interviews folks and then proposes appointments, and then city council interviews them and makes a final decision. Thanks for that. Let's move to our legislative agenda. I think we have a special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36176 amending ordinance number C 36161 passed by the City Council December 13, 2021 and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022 making appropriations the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency appropriating funds in American Rescue Plan Fund. One, increase appropriation by $12,100,000 funded from the city's direct allocation of the state and local fiscal recovery fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $1,200,000 is provided for the purpose of funding mobile medical clinics in the region. B of the increased appropriation, $1,500,000 is provided for the reimbursement of permit fees of attainable housing. C of the increased appropriation, $900,000 is provided for the grants to support the downtown cultural events in order to reimburse marketing costs and police fire costs owed to the city associated with these events. D of the increased appropriation, $3,500,000 is provided for the support of homelessness service capital and operational costs. E of the increased appropriation, $3 million is provided for culturally appropriate behavioral health services and interventions for at-risk and low-income youth. F of the increased appropriation, $2 million is provided for ARPA-focused projects of citywide significance. This action arises from the need to provide appropriation authority for funding supporting homelessness youth, a COVID-19 safety community, and city economic development.
All right. So for those of you watching, this is setting aside funding for these matters. The actual spending would go through the development of a request-for-proposal process, and then an issuance, and then an evaluation of that for most of these. I don't believe we have any community comment. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just real quickly to say, I definitely support the categories that we're allocating dollars towards, and obviously, a lot of the details will be worked out as the RFPs are put together and brought forward, and just look forward to participating in that process and hoping we can get some positive outcomes. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton?
Just a quick question. Of the money that we're looking at for homelessness, operational costs, and capital, that will go out to an RFP, through an RFP process, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any kind of update or more information from the administration on possible programs or possible buildings or anything like that yet? Are we still waiting?
We are still waiting for anything definitive that we can report out to the public.
Okay.
They assure us progress is being made, and even potentially for the encampment on Second, so stay tuned. And I wish I had more details because everyone is quite concerned, and understandably so.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President Sinai. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Councilmembers Apoem?
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. There's no emergency ordinances, but we do have some resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Resolution 2022-20... Excuse me. Resolution 2022-2022, sorry. Setting hearing before City Council for April 11, 2022 for the vacation of the alley between Sanson Avenue and Everett Avenue from the east line of Freya Street to the west line of Sycamore Street, as requested by Jeff and Stacy Boyes.
All right. That is just setting the hearing.
and Everett Avenue from the east line of Freya Street to the west line of Sycamore Street, as requested by Jeff and Stacy Boyes.
All right, that is just setting the hearing. There's no community comment, any council commentary? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next.
Resolution 2022-23, appointing Heather Sweet as Director of Customer Experience.
All right, this is a mayoral proposed appointment. No community comment? Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingel?
Yeah, I just want to say I had the opportunity to sit and talk with her, and I think she's going to do a fantastic job. She brings a lot of really great experience, and I think the city is going to be better for hiring her. So I want to thank the mayor for submitting her as someone for us to approve. And, you know, I look forward to seeing that happen tonight.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just to piggyback, I had a really good conversation with Heather, and she gives me a lot of confidence that some of the concerns and complaints that I've heard from a few constituents regarding 311 will be addressed, and hopefully, that program will be even stronger under her leadership. So happy to support.
All right, any other commentary? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed?
Aye.
All right, that's seven to zero, passes.
Ordinance C 35825, vacating Granite Street from the north right-of-way line of Upriver Drive to the north right-of-way line of Ross Court.
All right, there is no community comment requested. And I don't see Eldon here to talk about it. I know we've talked about it before, so. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Last ordinance.
Ordinance C 36172, vacating various right-of-ways in the plot of North Minnehaha addition to Spokane.
All right, again, there is no requested public commentary, any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just really excited to have the Esmeralda Commerce Park being developed there in the NEPDA, and that's what these rights were being vacated for. So just really excited about the project.
All right, excellent news. All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And we've got no first-reading ordinances, special considerations or hearings. We do have open forum, and I believe we have one person signed up. Anwar Peace. Anwar, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right, Anwar, welcome back to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes. Are you there, Anwar? We're not hearing you.
Good evening.
Yes.
Last week, I emailed the City Council an update about the brutal arrest of a black homeless man on February 4th, who spent two weeks in jail falsely. As a black man myself, this case truly touches my heart deeply in so many ways, because it atoned for me personally in my own life, because in 2011, I was falsely arrested for jaywalking by Seattle police. After spending 35 days in jail, I had been evicted and found myself homeless, sleeping on a pier on the Seattle waterfront for months. Here in Spokane, last April, again, I found myself being falsely arrested for jaywalking by five Spokane police officers as retaliation due to me being a 21-year police accountability activist. In this April arrest, the police chief felt the need to, at 3:00 in the morning, while he was out of town, email three City Council members about my arrest. And once the chief got back into town, he watched the body camera footage, and he quickly realized that his officers had lied to the police reports. The police chief then had my jaywalking charges dropped. The police chief filed an internal complaint on the officer, which led to me having a mediation with that officer. The pattern of police reports and body cameras not matching up not only happened in my April case, but this pattern was also shown in the arrest of that black homeless man on February 4th. And his attorney has confirmed to me that all of their caseload now is the same kind of patterns of officers lying in police reports. Which means, in fact, that our police chief knows very, very well that a lot of his officers are proven liars, just like the two PAC team officers caught lying to a federal judge last year, which led to the police chief disbanding the PAC team. So the question must be asked, why is the police chief so comfortable with having proven liars around him? And does the police chief condone the heavy-handed police tactics being used against our homeless community? We in the community have seen public records requests that shows a series of email threads from the Downtown Business Partnership to police leadership, who then send emails to the downtown officers that direct this heavy-handed police tactics. Furthermore, the many lies of officers and police leadership have greatly harmed our community. So when will the City Council finally pass any kind of police reform? 60, 621 days have passed since the City Council put forward its police reform package. And to that, I say this: If not now, when? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peace, for participating tonight. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We are going to have a study session on Thursday, and we are going to discuss when we can come back to in-person meetings, given the expiration of the indoor mask mandate. We're still waiting for guidance from the governor on the emergency order and how that's going to affect the OPMA, but hopefully, we'll have that by Thursday. And we'll talk about when we can come back to in-person, probably hybrid, but the availability of the public to come into the chambers. So stay tuned for that. In the meantime, please take care of yourself and someone else, if you can, and go ZAGS.